Roll call both please.
Percy?
Here.
Hall? Kirby Hall?
Here.
Vandyne?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
Larry Hall?
Here.
Tudor?
Here.
Studer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Counsel, before you have the suitable amendments for March 3rd, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we accept the minutes as presented and have them placed on file.
Motion, Valdez, Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Valdez, Percy, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Studer?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Mayor, before just a few quick things. First time just want to remind everybody that this Thursday, at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock?
6:00.
6:00, 6:00 will be the city chambers meet candidates night with those who are running for office within the city. I believe the school board, the park board, as well as members here of the city council will have the opportunity to debate, discuss their, what they feel is best for the city in the coming years. So if you're basically running, I hope you're there. It would be nice to hear from everybody. And if you're not, you know, just take the package about listening to the candidates on the way to make the board call. I don't know if anybody knows that. Second thing, tonight we have Mr. Martell here from Ridgeport Logistics because Jenny's on a ski trip. So, Mr. Martell, if you'd like to, you know, kind of update on everybody where everybody's at Ridgeport, appreciate it.
Sure. Good evening, how's all, Mayor? Thanks for having us tonight. I know we got a couple of things on the agenda, but I wanted to come personally and thank you all for all your efforts so forth over the years. I think we closed on the annexation, I think, in 2010, so five years down the road, and we're starting to see the benefits of all your and our hard work. We've got the Michelin project, it's out there today, and it's finally coming around. We've got some weather issues to resolve yet with the snow, the cold, and rain over the last year, but I think we're on track if we get that done by 1st of September. It's very, very important for Michelin. They're moving, the senior vice president of logistics from Michelin, John Formansky, is actually moving to Chicago to run the facility on behalf of Michelin, which is so important for their long-term logistics. He's assured me that this is just the start. They know that there are going to be more space out there, so we're very excited looking at the option to expand and looking forward to that. I think they're going to be a long-term, good neighbor. John's a great guy, and I think he'll be, can't wait till he can come in and introduce himself to the council and become part of Wilmington community. So, I don't feel any of you have been out there, but it's a big deal. I mean, it's a big project, 1.7 million square feet, so it's, it's pretty exciting. We're getting ready on two new projects. The 1.1 million square foot we call Building D. We have the lead tenant for that building. They're going to take about 300,000 square feet of the phase one of that, so we're excited. They're starting to move dirt a little bit. I know that, I saw the guys out there on the, they're also taking a freezer building, so a freestanding 111,000 square foot freezer. They were out there, moved today, moving some dirt around, trying to get the pad to dry out so they can start construction, so. Two new buildings will be popping out of the ground here shortly. Very, very exciting company, very growth-oriented, and I think they'll draw other users to Ridgeport as well. We understand that we sold the corner parcel on Lorenzo Road and now Ridge Way to TA, Travel Plaza of America. We close on that at the end of the year, and they're on the market getting bids to start construction. So it'll be about a 25-acre travel plaza, so it'll be, it'll have a full-service restaurant, it'll have a quick-serve restaurant, and a big maintenance facility, as well as truck staging and fuel and so forth for trucks and cars, so. They're a publicly traded company, they manage about 300 or so of these projects around the country, so very, very good operator. Very excited to have them as part of Ridgeport. That's a great selling tool for us to have that service right on-site. It's going to be very, very exciting. We've had several other large projects looking at Ridgeport. We're in the hunt on one or two more, so hopefully we'll have some more news here shortly that we're excited about. We continue to be very aggressive in trying to locate companies to Ridgeport, so I think that'll pay off here shortly. We should see some more opportunity. We're going to be putting in a little more infrastructure going south to accommodate some, hopefully some potential growth that we hopefully see coming shortly. Finishing up Ridgeport or Ridge Way this year, getting the second signalization in, so we come off. Off of the 55, there'll be an interchange with Ridge Road there, and all of that lighting will be in place. I think we're, I know we're working on the life safety facility, looking for a home for that somewhere in Ridgeport. Hopefully we'll get that started here. We have a commitment to Michelin to get that up and operational within two years of completion of their building, so we'll be working on that as well. We're getting ready, as it relates to the BNSF railroad, we sold them about 70 acres of land that's west of the rail spurs that we put in, because they wanted to control all the land within the, inside of the rail. So, we closed on that, and we are getting ready, hopefully, to start construction another six miles of rail that will take us just about back out to the mainline track to the south. So we'll have, the goal is to have a southern switch and a northern switch, so the trains can pull in, then when they can do what they call their run-around and move the power to the other end, and then pull it back out. So, that should start construction as soon as the weather clears up, and that'll be an important consideration for some of their uses that they're thinking about. So we'll end up about, once that's completed, we'll have over 12 miles of rail on-site. So, all good stuff. Happy to answer any questions? Anybody have any comments, thoughts, or?
Is the tollway stall causing any grief on your marketing ability or your marketing ventures there?
You know, it's hard to tell. There was probably two large deals, maybe three, that we ended up not winning. One was Walmart, and Walmart ended up going to Indianapolis. That was primarily due to, they wanted to be located legally adjacent to a overnight service, like a UPS or a FedEx. They couldn't get that in Chicago, so they relocated there. Wrigley Mars is in the market for a very large facility. They wanted to be farther east. They also had a very, very unique layout of their building, so we, based on their facility design, we couldn't be very aggressive. I'm not sure where that's going to end up, but no one has come out and said that's an issue or not an issue at this point. But the two deals that we didn't get successful on, both of them had other reasons at this point, they didn't locate here.
Have you been talking, I doubt at all about 129 or what, how that will shape out if the tollway doesn't?
Is it still in our construction schedule? Construction schedule, we go to IDOT, we've stated 129 interchange, still in our construction schedule, I think, for 2016.
Yeah, it's still the five-year plan of 2016 and 2021. Ridgeport had direct access to them?
Yeah, we still have that all-access, but it was discussed even prior to the Illinois coming in. I think for the benefits by, even if the Illinois doesn't come in, it's all the environmental that's been done in that area, that were done in relationship to the Illinois, so that's kind of helpful, given the whole pipeline of, sort of, if the Illinois was decided.
We initially had contacted USDOT when we first started applying land at Ridgeport, because the USDOT, funding is required to prime IDOT funding for some design and infrastructure requirements, and so I think that collectively between USDOT and IDOT, they've spent about $15 million in design, on both Lorenzo Road and 129. So I think all of that's been done, and then the Illinois came in and sort of stalled that momentum of having both of those interchanges, Lorenzo Road reconstructed, and then 129 built. So we're still optimistic on 129. You know, I was, we were touring today a little bit, get up on the 80, and it's a mess. It's just a mess. So I think that it's, I think it's still the right decision for the state of Illinois and certainly Will County to have to continue to push, get that project done, because certainly for the long-term, as Will County continues to be, you know, a big engine for the metropolitan Chicago area, because of the logistics, that's very important. I think that the fear is that the opportunity for companies to locate other places are there, and I think that's, that's what's critical for Illinois, not just that project, but all our infrastructure projects, is to continue to grow infrastructure so we have, we can continue to attract those jobs. It's, we have, Indiana's become a ferocious competitor for Illinois businesses. I don't know if any of you have been out there, if you're going east on 80, all of a sudden you see billboard after billboard, you know, come to Indiana, come to Indiana. So they're very aggressive trying to take companies out of Chicago. I think that given, you know, Kansas, Kansas City has a big intermodal now, and so everybody's trying to get into that business and peel away some of the opportunity that Illinois really fosters, I think is still a key element of Richmond. Should maintain that, because of the growth, the growth opportunities that brings to our I think ComEd's been probably a little bit of a far on our side, but we're starting to make progress.
We are.
With them in terms of getting power through Ridgeport. We're working hard with them to get that done, and the gas company. But I think it all should be there in time to turn the lights on.
Hope so.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm sorry?
Our fingers crossed.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's going to be very busy somewhere else, or like I said, we've got a lot of action going on.
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be very exciting, and when we start, you know, we spent a lot of time getting through the paperwork, now getting, getting buildings up and reconstruction, and now we start to see people there and opportunity, and start how that starts to spill out into the community, and everybody can participate, that's great. Any questions or anything? Again, anytime, please call if you need anything, or.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's it. More, next, citizens comments, any citizens comments tonight?
Hello, my name is Jake Stoller, with Overland Group. We're developing the Dollar General down the road here. We're on the agenda today for your, just for a grading permit. Wanted to come see if you had any questions, comments, and address anything concerned you might have.
Okay. Who else have they too?
Are you hearing any local people?
We're trying to, yes.
Have you talked to any of the local contractors in the area?
Um, we have. We've bid out for a lot of local contractors. Obviously, we haven't been able to let any projects because we have not been able to get a permit to go forward yet, but right now, we're, I know our graders are trying to use a lot of the local operators, and if that's our goal, our plan to go forward is all.
Yeah, we noticed a lot of out-of-state life inflation, and we're wondering, you know, we obviously are looking forward to having some jobs here in our community.
Right. Well, no, we certainly will, that opportunity will be made.
And the only, the only update from the engineering standpoint, planning commission asked for a couple of things, the site plans to get changed. They submitted the new site plans today to KOB, they added the sidewalk that their planning commission recommended on the east side, and regards to landscaping and things like that, so so far we're seeing a lot of cooperation on the Dollar General. And the new facade they're going to have on this project is going to be a big, you have to see that big brown facade with the Dollar General yellow on there. They're working with us on doing a different type of facade, it's sort of consistent with the character of the bank and everything else like that, so planning commission was happy that they're looking to do that.
I think what we have found is they've worked extremely well with KOB as far as a lot of the issues that have come up. What some people may not realize, which I think is a great improvement, is in regards to the intersection. Most intersections have what they call a traffic loop at all intersections, so why do you pull up to that intersection? It'll detect that metal, it'll trigger signals, start a timer to change the lights. Because the traffic counts weren't very high in that, that intersection, there is no traffic loop on that side. And when we brought that up, when we recognized the increased traffic, General Dollar General stood up and said that they will look together, put forth the letter of credit to get that traffic loop signal put in, which will be a benefit now if you're using, whether you're not using the Dollar General, if you're coming to that intersection. You know, you sit there until time's up, now this will change that course, I think will be a benefit. That's it. At the same time, I think, you know, there has been concerns, I've heard with concerns, now using local contractors, that's always a big thing, using local help, but also I've heard concerns in regards to the facade, so I think with changes in the facade, you know, stay that course, I think everything will work out just fine.
Yeah. I think we've gone to an ethos of stucco look, that, and enhanced landscaping. We'll probably spend around 100,000, 150,000 more than we do on a typical project just on aesthetics. So like I said, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be an attribute to your town, and like I said, if you have any questions, concerns, feel free to address them or call us. I talked to Tony and KOB on multiple occasions, as have our engineers, and we want to be a good partner and a good resident of your town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other citizens comments? Okay, this is right in the planning and zoning commission. We have a motion in regards to the mass grading.
As recommended by the planning and zoning commission, I move to approve for the petitioner, Imperial Development Company LLC, to move forward with mass grading at the owner's own risk at the property located at 107 West Keylor Road.
Motion, Valdez, Percy, do you have a second? Second, Valdez, Kirby Hall, any discussion?
Just for clarification, I wanted to say that, you see, they've already been doing work out there.
Yeah, my question is, why is this coming off for us if this job is already complete?
Yeah, the thing is, is, there was discussion at that planning and zoning council, commission. Anytime, during their discussions, they were okay with the mass grading, but anytime the planning and zoning commission, especially if any commission is, advisory commission to the council, anytime they make the motion, that motion is more than a recommend, is a recommendation to the council. So they made a motion that night, they chose to make a motion, even though our city engineer has the full authority to issue a mass grading permit, they still chose to make that motion to allow them to do it at their own risk. And because that motion was made, it has to come to council because it's a recommendation only, and any type of motion that they make is a recommendation, has to follow the standards to go to council, even though they did not have to make that motion. All it took was KOB earned city engineer's authority, and that's how we have it all addressed in the ordinance, is the authorization of the city engineer to sign up on a mass grading to be done. But they still chose to make that motion, so it has to come to council.
We explained that to him there. Engineering parameters is within the scope of KOB issuing the permits. So, they were under site plan review, and Dollar General's going to come back with those recommendations. They wouldn't approve the site plan contingent on the recommendations that was provided by staff. They wanted to see the actual new site plan and the new facade, so they decided to continue the site plan review to the next meeting, and then they give this motion. It's just here as protocol, what, like I said, Mayor's right, when you ask for a motion.
So they know technically what they did was wrong, because it didn't come in front of council?
Who?
The planning and zoning.
It wasn't necessarily wrong. They were advised that, that Paul fell under the authority of the city engineer, they were advised to that, but they still chose to make that. I guess, I think they more or less chose to say that, basically saying that the Dollar General, we're still, we still support what they're doing. So, to give them assurances, hey, we're still supportive of your decision to build, so we're going to give you this mass grading permit, even though we still want to see these two things, we're going to continue the site plan review. I think that was more of us, they're trained to do that. They were fully aware that they didn't have to. I think they felt compelled to demonstrate to Dollar General that they were, they were in favor of their, their decision, per favor of what they're doing here, they just wanted to have a couple more things, but they still want to give them authority to move forward, even though they knew they didn't have.
So it's sort of like, we're glad we're here, we're happy.
So is this going back to planning and zoning?
Well, planning and zoning, they continue the site plan review, so.
Sometimes you see the site. Technically, this didn't have to, he had the authority to sign to issue that mass grading. Planning and zoning did it.
In most, in most cases, it's something we have to look at, we need to discuss in ordinance license while we're talking about it, is usually small projects that are already zoned. It's already zoned B3, and anytime a site plan comes in, it typically doesn't go to planning and zoning, because the zoning's already done. It goes right to your staff, they do their plan review, they do all that stuff, and then they get issued the permit. Doesn't even go to planning and zoning and stuff like that. We have in our, that direction, which in my opinion kind of stalls the flow of things, stalls that progression, stalls that growth. So it's something we need to discuss if we, because it really doesn't have to be in there for small projects like this, for larger projects, yes, but for smaller projects it don't. Not when it's already been, you know, unless there's subdivision and all that stuff, it's a bigger plan, then yes, it goes to planning and zoning, but it's just a lot, there's no subdivision, there's no nothing, no variances. Should have spent, done a plan review and they should be constructed, but we had to follow the procedures for the ordinance, so.
Mr. Mayor, can you explain how the planning and zoning commission is made up?
Planning and zoning commission is made up of seven members plus one chairman. Those appointments are all done through the mayor at various times. They have, each of them have different timeframes, time limits to their thing. The mayor makes the appointments, the council approves those appointments. They can change over the course of time, we're probably behind on a couple, but I bet it's happy with the way it's made up, so you really haven't made any changes. But, you know, that's usually definitely how it's done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call both please.
Percy?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
No.
Three yes, oh, sorry, five yes, three no, motion passed.
All right, our next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 9, 2015, at 6:00 PM. You made a report, building ground, tell safety committee, Oliver Percy, Oliver
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, April 15, 2015, at 6:30 PM.
Water Source speaks now, Oliver Studer, Oliver Kerwin.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation by the city engineer. I move to approve change order number one and pay request number two final, in the amount of $16,715.81 payable to Ausen Electric Incorporated for the temporary traffic signal lighting installation at Route 53 and South Orange Farm Road.
Motion, Valdez, Kerwin, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Valdez, Studer, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, April 15, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Police and Ed, Valdez, Studer, Oliver, Studer.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April 14, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Land Act, Alderman, Studer, Oliver, Studer.
I move to approve the March 17, 2015, accounts payable report in the amount of $240,165.41 in February 28, 2015, collector's report in the amount of $298,739.87.
Motion, Valdez, Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Valdez, Studer, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve ordinance number 15-03-17-01, an ordinance providing for supplemental appropriation and line item transfers for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2014, and ending April 30, 2015.
Motion, Valdez, Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Valdez, Evans, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the eighth amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and among the city of Wilmington and Illinois Municipal Corporation, Will County, Illinois, Ridge Logistics Park 1 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, Ridge Partners 1 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and Ridge Management Team LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, pending final attorney review.
Motion, Valdez, Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Valdez, Studer, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Studer?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the ninth amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and among the city of Wilmington and Illinois Municipal Corporation, Will County, Illinois, Ridge Logistics Park 1 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, Ridgeport Partners 1 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and Ridge Management Team LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, pending final attorney review.
Motion, Valdez, Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Valdez, Studer, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Studer?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April 21, 2015, at 6:00.
All right, ordinance license committee, Oliver Kirby Hall, Oliver Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve an ordinance, number 1503-17-02, an ordinance updated chapter 92, point 24, for heavy deposit of smoke for private property, that city maintains property.
Motion, Valdez, Evans, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Valdez, Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roll call both please.
Evans?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Tudor?
Yes.
No.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Studer?
No.
Six yes, two no, motion passed.
Yes, I'd like to approve ordinance number fifteen dash oh three dash seventeen dash oh three, an ordinance of the provisions of chapter seventy-three, motor vehicle crimes of the vote table of ordinance.
Motion by Alderman Evans, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion?
Did they get all the changes on, for the left side and the little stipulations that we had?
Yeah, it was in there.
So.
What was, what was the committee's decision on the rest of these ordinances? Was it unanimous, do we know?
As far as what you mean, on just this specific ordinance?
Well, we can go one at a time, or, it seemed like the first one, there was not a unanimous decision on this. Wondering what the, what the vote was at committee level.
There was an I, yeah.
Pardon?
Nobody really, I mean, you know, the rule of rule, the I, it didn't really count. A little opposition, but shit, it's going on the street.
Yeah, but in regards to this one, the motor vehicle one, there was no opposition at all from you guys?
No.
I think everybody was on the same page.
Once we got an understanding from the chief, and basically, a lot of the stuff dealt with placement of the sticker, instead of having it on the passenger side or the driver's side, made it more visible and easier for officers to see.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Oh, that's oh four, ahead of myself, ain't I?
Are we talking about the, we're talking about the fines, correct?
Is it, is it oh three about where it's located?
Yeah, traffic. No, oh three deals with vehemence pounding.
My fault.
So, any information?
My fault.
Oh, four on the stickers.
Sorry.
Oops. But I don't think anybody had a problem with that. I thought we was going to keep step four in there, too.
That's the next, that's the next ordinance.
Yes, oh four.
We're on oh three right now.
We're on E two.
Oh, oh three was a cleanup, in regards to the following this state statute, in regards to the process for impounding vehicles.
Okay, wrong one. I see, yeah.
All right, any further discussion in regards to the, motion in regards to fifteen oh three dash seventeen dash oh three? All right, Rock Calvo, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number fifteen dash zero three dash seventeen dash zero four, an ordinance providing for fair and efficient administrative adjudication of violations of traffic regulations concerning standing, parking, condition of vehicle, and display of vehicle wheel taxi licenses.
Motion by Alderman Kirby Hall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion?
Okay, that's the one.
This is the one with fines.
This is, this is the one with fines and cleanup for the administrative hearing process.
Correct.
For also for collections and things like that. The city license one is our first reading tonight, so that's the next one.
But, the fines that are on here is what the chief worked on for the, at the committee level, and came back and was agreed.
Right, but I thought we was going to leave step four on there.
If you look at step three, it says if you fail to appear at the second hearing, the fine will be paid before the third hearing, and shall be, or upon a final determination liability, shall be. So in a sense, you have a fourth step there if it's necessary. Many times, you won't need a fourth step, because it'll, you'll have a final determination liability before you need a fourth step, so.
I had my fourth crossed out, on mine.
The chief also said that, he didn't think, he was saying that some people wouldn't get that far, because after paying that kind of money, they wouldn't want to go with the first one.
So, you know, basically that adds additional language in there to catch all in case it ever has to come, so. Step four was eliminated, although there was language in there in the event that it's necessary to have a final determination liability behind the second hearing and third hearing.
Okay. Any further discussion? Rock Calvo, please.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, we are having a first reading, an ordinance amending and deleting certain provisions of chapter seventy-one licensing provision, and deleting in its entirety article two food deliveries of chapter one fifteen of the City of Wilmington Code of Ordinances. And we have another first reading, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-nine purchasing and contracts. And the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six PM.
Our personnel, Director Bergman, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick.
Nothing at this time, but we are having an executive session for matters of litigation.
City engineer's report, Mr. Elias.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Elias's report, I think most, you guys spoke about most of the stuff at Wausau, I'm just going to kind of go back. Mainly the main thing with the Kankue River Bridge, as you're aware, the test signals are being installed, which should be up here in the next couple days, whatever. Basically, that project, probably a couple weeks down the line, they're just trying to get the signals up there, get everybody used to going through there. It's going to be a congested, stressed through town all summer long, for the most part, so it's just something to, they're getting it up there, trying to get everybody used to either find a different route, or leave it a little early to get, to get through there. The one or two improvements, those should be started very shortly as well. You know, it's easy to be doing both those projects, working hopefully on both of them together, and hopefully, but, you know, like I said, it could be a lot of congestion, a lot of construction in those sections of town, so hopefully everybody's able to use Kankue Street or find other means of getting through town.
We're going to keep Kankue Street open, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the high-speed rail projects, you know, we haven't really gone too far with them. You know, the bridge is up there, being bid right now, but I haven't got much information back from them. But the Kankue Street, First Street, Strip Mine, those are all in design, the design phase right now. We're still waiting here to get some plans back from the high-speed rail on the Kankue River Drive crossing. They've agreed to keep that open, so we're anxious to see those plans come back to get a feel and a better look at what's, what else is going to happen, what we need to do potentially with the side streets, on keeping vehicles moving through there and having a clear, clear view of the cars coming in both directions there, so. Kankue River Drive, that was a short project. They closed up at seven o'clock one night, and it won't be done in noon the following day. It took until three thirty, four o'clock to finally get it taken care of, but it was just redoing the crossing, keep going across the rail there, to get a smoother transaction since that, that crossing won't be closed, as far as we're aware right now, so. Then going into the city projects, you've basically got the fifty-three Piattone, South Arsenal Interchanges. ESI is looking to get that project up and going by May, and Providence is looking to get the Piattone project going by July. There's still some plans approved from IDAT, but it's mostly moving all right, it's more the right-of-way acquisition that's what we're trying to take care of and confirm, to get IDAT to approve those plans.
So I anticipate having that Piattone road done this year?
Well, I would say it'd be done this year, I think it'd be up and, probably to the surface and the striping in the spring of next year, but, you know, we're looking to get most of the work done, similar to what we did with Kankue River Drive that year, we did that, get all the asphalt, get all the curb and all the improvements done, but we'll come back to the surface and the final, the final striping, right in spring, so. The summer, I have a T project, you know, Gary and I have been driving around, checking, checking the streets and the alleys, trying to get a list of ones that are in dire need, and try and get a priority list put together, and we'll bring that to Wausau in the next month or two, to get all that passed through you guys, and if you got some streets or anything else you keep wanting us to look at, feel free to pass that on to us, you know, as we're talking and going through this. We anticipate about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the funds for that project, it may be a little higher, maybe a little less, but that's just the, that's the amount that we're looking at right now, but, you know, typically, like we normally do, it's more of a building overlay of the streets and alleys, basically what we're, we're looking to do, for the most part. And the fifty-three water main replacement, yeah, the project's looking to get started here in May, whatever, just trying to get everything squared with EPA, as far as the loan and everything, so we still got the agreement with Austin Tyler to do the work, so it's just a matter of getting everything squared with EPA to move that project forward, so.
Two thousand and fifteen will be the year, the orange sign.
Hey Kobe?
Yes, sir.
What do you plan on doing against structure of that fifty-three for Bureau of Delwood, you know?
Bureau of Delwood?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And the other one, I fifty-five.
Yeah, the only construction going on I fifty-five will be at Route six.
Yep, and that's way to be.
Yeah, Route six?
Yep.
That might be on hold with the governor's plan, so it might be.
Logit Road. They're going to take out the bridge.
Yeah, Logit Road is gone.
Look, Logit's going to come out, but that won't have any impact on traffic, it'll be nice on traffic overnight. I think, I want to take the. Yeah, they take the bump, it's out, but during the daytime, it won't be any effect.
Thank you, sir. Can I see this report? Any ideas or anything else you want to see on this report? This is a new report Kobe put together, working with us, so. If anything else you want to add, let Kobe know. We have a report that you guys will see on the regular basis.
I guess you could give us an update on our utilities, since we don't have a manager for the water, is there any highlights to make or?
Well, I can take that.
Yeah.
City administration, go. I did, I did get some updates today from the Jack, Super Tank of Water, the water pipe is back on, surface water.
Things better again.
Yeah, it smells better.
The well, the well did his job, was supposed to do, back up to get everything. The one thing he knows, when we did put the well on, there was a couple of minor water main breaks. Remember, the well water's coming out about forty-eight degrees, and it hit our cold water, then it hit our mains, so we think a couple of breaks that happened in the last, you know, four or five days, was directly related to our warm water, you know, hitting the cold pipes. But they probably would have happened sooner or later when the water warmed up, so I think we had a wind main break over by BMW, we believe, that's our old, our old water main anyway, but it's got probably fifty or sixty plugs on it, as it is, that project will be a good project to do. An update on the, remember you guys passed the chief's request for debt collection recovery with that company? We're starting to receive checks, so they're starting to be successful in collecting some of our debt out there on the administrative hearing tickets out there, so that's, that's a good payment. When you approved the billings today for ESI, for the company that did the traffic work up on South Arsenal Road, the reason this was also on there is the state is now releasing the economic development program funds, so those were froze up for a little while, but the state now has agreed to start releasing those funds, so now the payments will come in on a regular basis. The way Kim is doing it is payment comes in, we pay them, and then we submit those for reimbursement. So we submitted those reimbursements back in November, December for some of that project, so now that those funds are coming in, gives us funds back into that project fund to be able to pay out again. So that's good news, the state is starting to, you know, pay our reimbursements. That's all, that's all the, sort of the updates from, you know. One thing that Gary, Gary is doing is he's starting to look at our parks, and, because the mayor started to look at taking that over, and I know the person asked about some trees, definitely there were some trees that needed to be addressed out there in parks, that looked like they were ready to fall down, branches and things, so. Gary's crew did potholing, they got out, Strip Mine, the road, did have a couple of complaints up at Strip Mine Road, there's some potholes, so Gary's crew got out there with their new machine there, we heated up, and they were fixing those potholes the next day, and get all filled in, so. If you got anyone that talks to you about potholes, you know, call, call into the city hall, and then Gary will get, you know, usually the next day, he'll get to get out there and start repairing the potholes. They are out there themselves, looking at potholes, so. If you talk to your residents, or they call you, order an email over to Joey or Kobe, and I've got on the list, because we know we'll have potholes on a regular basis probably for the next couple of weeks.
On that one stage?
What?
On that one stage, you got?
Oh, now I got that part, yeah. The hard drive on the stage, good thing you put it on there to remind me. I was, I've been approached by the campus committee, that they want to look at taking the stage down, and want to rebuild a new one, and I thought I'd bring that to city council, you know, because it is attached to the property, I believe the, you know, it's our parks, we have the right to do that, so give them permission to, volunteers are going to take it down and remove it, and then we'll bring something, discussion about what the new stage is going to look like, when we find out from the committee, I know they'll work on some ideas. Maybe the mayor has an idea or any.
No, I think, no, we're just looking to possibly, I mean, that stage is old, it's seen its days, so it's looking to take that down. This year, we'll probably go with a temporary stage in a different location. There's a tree next to the stage we wanted to take up, too, that he was discussing. But I think one of the big things is, I think we're talking, we've got people that are going to be talking actually to the cemetery, because they may be able to use that stage as a shed, may not function as a stage anymore, but we'll just cut it out, and we got volunteers, we'll put it on a trailer, and if they can utilize it, we'll get it over to them, so. We're going to kind of do it in phases, we'll look to take the stage down this year. Might need some electrical help, you know, to take care of it. So, yeah, it's, it's a process, so, we're, we're going to continue to move it then, so.
And we are working with transition on the park district. Kevin's had communications going back and forth with the, with the office there. We were able to get the, you know, some of the combat bills, the help with budgeting in regards to that. We're still asking for some other additional information. We did get their insurance report in regards to the inspection of the properties, and then we asked for additional, the additional inspections that they did, or any maintenance issues that they're aware that we, that they're planning on doing this next year, and we'll see those documents yet. It's, it's moving slowly, but we'll get there. And the IRFP did go in the paper for the, for the long, long work, so it'll be tomorrow.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. Attorney's report, Mr. Irving.
Since the last meeting, I've been involved in some work in regards to the right-of-way Piattone Road, and also Arsenal Road, and I also worked on advising the city ordinance on vehicle empowerment.
Let's see, now we got a motion to go to executive session? Larry McCallum?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session at seven forty-eight PM for matters of litigation to C eleven.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, do we have a second? Second. Second by Alderman Kerwin, Rock Calvo, please.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.